We're ready if you want.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. This is the July 16, 2014, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all asked to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item One, 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge; Item Two, 2012-04, Storybook Homes; Item Three, 2012-02, Carlson Associates; Item Four, 2013-06, Bolo Long Island Operating Corp; Item Five, 2014-02, Haddington Company; Item Six, 2014-03, Sun Enterprises; Item Seven, Number 773 Scholar Estates; Item Eight, Number 1139, Jenna Court; Item Nine, 299 Archer Hills; Item Ten, 1125 Tahami Platt; Item Eleven, 288 Olivia Estates; and under Part Two, Item Twelve, 2010-06, KVC Holdings; Item Thirteen, 911A Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on any of these items regarding which the Planning Department is requesting or recommending an adjournment? None? Motion, please.
Chairman, motion to adjourn items one through thirteen on the July 16 calendar as just read.
Second.
Question on the motion?
What's that?
I just have a question on the motion. Item number eight, Jenna Court, can you please explain why this item is, you're requesting adjournment? It's been tabled or adjourned since the November 6 meeting. I believe we were waiting residents to come forward and some ground as well as support to keep the road as is.
Well, as it's, I discussed this with the Highway Superintendent actually about a week ago, and what he had agreed to, and the applicant appeared to agree to, there was apparently a misunderstanding among what the Highway Superintendent wanted. So I asked him to give him a call because the owner was on the impression that if he just marked off the area, that the Highway Superintendent would be happy, and the Highway Superintendent called me and said, "No, we're not going to do that." So I asked the Highway Superintendent to give him a call, and we're waiting for the applicant to come back with a proposal the way the Highway Superintendent wanted, which was to have a flush curb at that particular location.
I recall, have we heard from any of the residents who would like the road to remain as is or modified?
No, that was the other issue, was we wanted it in writing. Supposedly, the Highway Superintendent was informed verbally that the residents agreed with the position, and I also mentioned that the board has requested that in writing, that we want to see something in writing from the residents before we agree to this. Because the critical issue is, and I think this board is aware, that that is going to be not maintained by the Highway Department, it's going to be maintained by private individuals, so we're awaiting that as well.
Okay. I'll vote to adjourn this one time, but I think, could you kindly bring forth the resolution that you had originally prepared, I believe back in December or January, requiring the contractor to restore the road the way he originally promised?
We'll have it done by the next meeting. Before we, the ask of adjournment...
Well, you know, I think you should just make a recommendation based upon what you think should be done, because everybody in the board may not agree with one way or the other.
Okay.
That's the first thing. The second thing is that I don't think there should be any conditions on the adjournment, because it's the summertime, people are away, the next time, for some reason or another reason, may not be ready. So when it's ready, you can bring it back on again. There was a motion to adjourn everything that was read, I believe that motion was seconded. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Or so adjourned?
Okay. I would just, before we go on to the regular matters, since we were talking about adjournments, I would just mention, I was going to mention this at the end of the meeting, but since we wanted to discuss these. All Seasons Motor Lodge, which was , had been an adjourned one, if you recall, that was the request to modify a special exception, and the, the board refused to grant it because of the condition of the site. We have gone back several times for inspections on that particular site. Each time, there was like one thing done. There was a whole shopping list of things that have been done. The applicant, my, my staff informed me on Monday that the last inspection, all he had to do was now move the dumpsters to a given spot that was directed by the board, and we're done. So if he has this done by, in time for the next meeting, I would just ask the board, if you want in your field inspections, because the board went up there several times to take a look at it, you may want to take a look at that between now and the next meeting as well.
Thank you for the heads up. Very good.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 14, is an extension of conditional final approval for Jason Estates, Number 889B. The applicant is requesting a 90-day retroactive extension of conditional final approval and an additional 90-day extension in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of posting the performance bond and filing the map. The map of Jason Estates, 889B, was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on December 5, 2012. The conditional approval expired on June 5, 2013. On August 21, 2013, the Planning Board granted the applicant a 90-day retroactive extension and an additional 90-day extension to December 5, 2013. The applicant is requesting the extensions because the map was not signed and filed with the Suffolk County Clerk by the December 15, 2013 deadline. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolutions for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a 180-day retroactive extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as map of Jason Estates, 889B, beginning December 5, 2013, through June 5, 2014; and be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants an additional 90-day extension of time to the conditional final approval of the subdivision known as map of Jason Estates, 889B, beginning June 5, 2014, through September 5, 2014.
Mr. Trumarko, you present on behalf of the applicant?
I am. Vincent Trumarko, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I'll bring up the affidavit of posting in a second. The reason why it's taken so long, and we asked the board to give us this last extension is, there are two owners of those two parcels, and we finally got Mr. and Mrs. Geddes to sign the map, which was, I think, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago. So we ask for your approval of the extension.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any members of the board? None? Motion, please?
Frank, you need two individual motions on this? I'll just...
Yeah, well, you could, I would say yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's the best way to approach it, yes.
Motion to grant 180-day retroactive extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as map of Jason Estates, Number 889B, beginning December 5, 2013, through June 5, 2014, and motion to grant an additional 90-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as map of Jason Estates, Number 889B, beginning June 5, 2014, through September 5, 2014.
That's two motions. Can we have two seconds, please?
Second.
On each one?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, on each one?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed on either one? None? Both resolutions are adopted unanimously.
Do you have the affidavit of posting?
Mr. Trumarko, the affidavit of posting?
I'm going to bring it out.
Oh, okay. Here.
Thanks.
I don't think it's a problem.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 15, is a waiver request for Catherine Estates, Number 1127.1. The applicant requests to waive the requirement of installing 121 linear feet of sidewalks, four street trees, and a storm pool within the subdivision known as Catherine's Estates, Number 1127.1. The applicant received conditional final approval for this subdivision from the Planning Board on April 20, 2011. This application was approved for a two-lot subdivision on a one-acre parcel with frontage on Darling Avenue. A performance bond estimate was approved by the board, requiring the applicant to install 121 linear feet of sidewalks, as well as four street trees along Darling Avenue. The applicant is requesting a waiver of all 121 linear feet of sidewalks and all four street trees. The applicant is also requesting to waive the requirement of installing a 12-foot-by-8-foot storm pool for the existing home. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the waiver request. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that construction has not yet begun on the proposed home. Ordinarily, existing homes and subdivisions are not retrofitted with roof drywells. In this case, the applicant was bonded for this because it was depicted on the architect's plans. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to waiving this requirement. However, it has been the past practice of the board not to entertain waivers of required public improvements such as sidewalks and street trees before homes are built. This is because residents may buy into a subdivision with the expectation that certain improvements will be completed and should have the opportunity to respond to the waiver requests. Additionally, because no clearing has begun for the proposed home or driveway, it is difficult to determine which existing trees will survive and how many additional new street trees may be needed. Therefore, it is the position of the Planning Department that this application is premature. With respect to the 12-foot-by-8-foot storm pool, the Planning Department recommends the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Danny Hickey to waive the request for one 12-foot-by-8-foot storm pool on the existing house and reduce the cash deposit in lieu of a performance bond by $4,000. Further, with respect to the sidewalk and street trees, the Planning Department recommends that the waiver request be adjourned until the proposed home is constructed. And we have the affidavit.
You have the affidavit of posting? Okay, just the name and address for the record, please.
Danny Hickey, 52 Darling Avenue, Smithtown. I'm requesting a waiver for the sidewalks and the street trees because there are no sidewalks and no street trees on that block. All of the houses are built. I probably have in excess of 70 large trees on my front yard between my house and the street. I just think it's, it's a totally unnecessary request. I have overhead pictures that show all the trees up there. Across the street is a county park. There are no sidewalks over there. There are no sidewalks on any of the streets behind me or in that entire neighborhood.
Is, how many homes are going to be proposed here? One?
I have one home there now, and there's a proposed home on the lot behind the house.
And...
And that, that, that proposed house would actually be behind the existing house, so there would be no reason to put a sidewalk in front of it.
Well, the Planning Department is pointing out that usually sidewalk waivers and waiving of planting of street trees is, are not usually done until after the home is constructed. So I don't think they're recommending that we deny that request. I think that what they're, what they're saying is that it's just not ready yet.
Yeah, I have...
So is it, would there be any hardship that you can tell us about that you would experience if, if it was just delayed until after the house was built regarding the sidewalks and the trees?
Currently, I've been trying to sell that lot for almost, you know, two years. I have no buyers, and I have $22,000 in cash tied up in the bank, and I would like to get some of that money released so that I can do some other improvements to the property. You know, and, and it's cash money that I have on deposit. I'm not getting any interest on it. It's in my name and the town's name, and I'd like part of it released, since there are no sidewalks and there aren't going to be any sidewalks, and it probably should not be requested that there be sidewalks in an area where there are none or no expectation of having, having any.
What, can you respond to that, Mr. Trumarko?
Well, several things. First off, if you put money, if you give the town a passbook with the amounts of money in that, and you would get all the interest from that while the money is in...
It's not, it's not a passbook. They wouldn't provide a passbook. It's the money that's on deposit with the town having oversight...
When you say they wouldn't provide a passbook, who wouldn't provide a passbook?
It's the Bank of, County Bank of New York over here on Route 111.
But you could take the money if you want to convert it into a passbook. Any other bank will bring, what I'm getting at is that if...
All, all I'm saying is that, you know, I have over $7,000 tied up here that I think could be released so that I could do some other improvements on the property. And I think it's unfair to hold money of mine for sidewalks and trees that are not going to be built. And if I show you overhead pictures of the property, I have 100 trees there. Where am I going to put four more? Just makes no sense at all.
Well, what happens is, is that the trees exist there right now, but during construction, the trees may come down. And when the town has promised trees, we always say if there are existing healthy trees that remain on the property, these could be substituted for whatever the trees are that you need for that particular site. So that's why we wait to the end of the job, because we want to make sure that the trees are there.
Well, that, that is correct, and I have submitted a tree plan to, to the nature of the trees that I wish to take down in order to make accommodations for a driveway.
Except that, since the house is not under construction yet, we don't know if the trees are going to remain. That's, you know, there's no protection from the town's point of view.
Right, but we're, we're calling them street trees, and in fact, the house that is proposed is behind the existing house and probably over 400 feet from the road. So I don't know why we would call them street trees, and I do not know why we would be required to put a sidewalk back there.
The only trees that you are bonded for are the trees that are within the public, that are within the public right of way.
Could I interject for a moment?
Sure.
Just to make sure I follow this one. How much money is being held right now?
Well, on those two items alone, in, in total, 22,000 and change, but on those two items alone, sidewalks, $2,420, street trees, $1,200. So $3,620 of my money is sitting there for something I'm not going to be...
The 22,000 is being held by us, by our requirement. How much are you looking to have released for these quote-unquote "other improvements"?
He just said 3,600, I think.
No, he just mentioned 3,620. That you want us to release, you want to release or retrieve 3,620?
Well, $2,420 is being held for sidewalks.
I get that.
Okay, there are not going to be any sidewalks built. I mean, we're not taking anything away. We're not adding anything that's going to be there. And $1,200 are being held for four trees.
And that 3,600 is what you would like to retrieve for other improvements on site?
I would like to retrieve that in addition to the, the storm pool that he mentioned before.
And how much was the value of the storm pool?
4,000.
Okay, so roughly 7,600.
And $20, that's correct.
Is there a problem with releasing that amount of money and still holding the balance as a bond against sidewalks and trees at a later time?
Well, the, the question is, is are you releasing, how are you doing this? That's the question, that I'm, that's why I'm hesitating, because the performance bond is done by this board, the performance bond amount. What we give you is an itemized list of how we justify that particular figure. It's not supposed to be a shopping list. It is supposed to be a justification as to how we came up with whatever that particular number is. When someone asks for a waiver request, and the, there's a couple of issues here. If, in the past, the Planning Board has rarely reduced the performance bond while something has been in effect. You either release it in its entirety, or you keep it going for whatever purpose, as an incentive to get the project finished. We're assuming that this board is going to entertain a reduction in the performance bond before the applicant has undertaken his, his performance.
I get that.
In that case, we are looking at this as a precedent for the board in terms of how you will approach this and other cases. This is not going to be the end result. We have another case that's going to be coming up. And what we're, we think it's board's discretion as to whether or not you wish to waive the requirements or reduce the, the performance bond. But, but what we're giving you is our recommendation that we think the, the drywell that was requested for the house, that was the applicant who drew that on, we normally would not have. So we feel that that's a legitimate request to reduce the performance bond, because we would normally not request that. And then the other two items, by past practice, we've always felt that those were issues to be resolved at the end of a job. Now, the board certainly has the authority to look at each case in unique ways, if you feel that there are extenuating circumstances or whatever you feel in this particular case. But if the board does that, it's going to be hard pressed to stop other requests, other similar requests like this.
Now, the, go ahead. Please don't call.
I think so. Basically, you're saying that we would set a bad precedent if we would have waived them at this time, and to release the funds is an impossibility unless we go ahead and waive those particular requirements.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
If, if these two items are waived today, does the applicant then have to come back and make an application to have the money reduced anyway? Or that automatically be done if we, if we waived the, the trees and the sidewalk requirement?
If you waive this, if you reduce the performance bond, we prepare a resolution to release those funds. It goes to the town attorney's office, they review it, and if it's in the proper order, they will cut a check for the applicant for the remaining funds.
Now, is it...
Yeah, but the applicant, the application, correct me if I'm wrong, the application that we have today doesn't say anything about a performance bond. It says that the applicant wants to waive the sidewalks and four trees. And the pool, the storm pool, which you've already agreed that it's not a problem.
Well, I believe that the applicant's intent, what he's said, the applicant's intent, and maybe it should have been, it should have been placed in here, is to get a performance bond reduction.
That's correct.
Maybe that was, it could, should have been worded...
Mr. Chairman, would it help if I could just show you a couple of pictures of the front of the...
Sure.
This is an overhead of my property. This is where the proposed house is on the map. This is the street without any sidewalks. This is a county park.
Okay.
These are all trees.
This is the proposed house over here, the white, white area?
That's correct.
Do you want to see this, Barbara?
No, I, I've been here.
And there are no sidewalks on the streets?
Not at all.
And, Mr. Trumarko, or maybe you could tell us, Mr. Hickey, the, the sidewalks that you're seeking to waive, okay, are those, those are on the, along the street? In front of the, in front of the existing house? Do you, if, if we were going to consider waiving the sidewalks, would you feel comfortable doing it without going there first?
Yeah, I don't want to bring that up there. This is a question except for the, the board's people. We just had this one two months ago, where they came for us and wanted some of the sidewalks waived, because they thought there's no sidewalks there. We said, no, we have them too.
Why should we hold funds for sidewalks on the streets where we know there are no sidewalks?
The board wishes to waive something.
What we've done in the past, because we've always done that, and then in the end, some of the people, now we haven't done that for a while, but some of the people even had to put into a sidewalk fund. So I think we should really adjourn it and think about it. I don't think we should rush to that.
Well, if, if we were going to consider waiving the sidewalks, would you, would you feel not comfortable doing that without at least going there to see first, whether you want to waive them or not, without making any type of a commitment one way or the other?
I, I really don't want to set a precedent. I don't, I think in the end, I'm gladly, when the construction is completed, I would gladly say I've been there. I've been there many times, waived the sidewalks.
But I understand, but if, but if, if we're going to go out and look at it, if maybe you feel uncomfortable about waiving it, and I'm not saying that by going there you're going to automatically agree, but that would, we would then have to adjourn it, and then we would go and look at it, and then we would, if whoever wants to go look at it, and then we would discuss it on the next, at the next time it came on. No, I, yeah, I would imagine, okay. You can talk louder. This could all be on, this could all be heard.
We were doing that. Now we've changed our sourcing, and we're saying you don't have to put the money. Many people, we still do. I'm, I'm, I am against, and with this situation, and I am against putting it into a sidewalk and tree fund. I just think that you adjourn it over the construction, not just at a precedent. So, I mean, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chays, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to know what we're going to actually vote on. There's no resolution of...
Well, the resolution was read, wasn't it?
Yes. I, I will go along with that resolution as read, but any amendments there too, I think, have to be written out, so we know exactly what we're voting on here.
And then in all fairness to the locals, to then waive it, I would clearly waive it at this time. I'm afraid it's better precedent.
So basically, Mr. Hickey, it's your position that if the sidewalk waiver and the tree, a street tree waiver are adjourned until the house is built, you're against that because the $3,620 that's allocable to those two items would be, continue to be held until such time as the house is built, and your position is you would rather have the waivers done now so that that $3,620 would be available to you will be released?
I think that's a reasonable request.
Well, we have, we're missing a board member tonight, but it doesn't seem to be a consensus on the board to deal with this one way or the other. It's going to be, I think perhaps advisable to adjourn this till the next meeting, and perhaps we could have a decision on it by then. I don't know if everybody has, is on, is on the same page, and I think certainly there's been at least two members of the board who have indicated that they would not be inclined to waive it today without an amended resolution, which we don't have. So I think if that's going to happen, I think if it's going to happen, we're going to need an amended resolution. So I think it would be best, my opinion would be best to adjourn this to the next meeting, so that we can determine, first of all, if the resolution as written is going to be acceptable, and if it's not, what type of resolution might be acceptable to a majority of the board. So I think if we adjourn it, it's going to be till August, then we can hopefully make a decision on it in August, and, and in August, either waive it and release, which would result in releasing the money, or not waive it, which would mean that the money would have to be held until some later date.
Month the adjournment caused you waiting, or should regard to these other improvements you're thinking of?
Uh, no.
We may very well break down two and two on this issue anyway, so we'll need Adam, assuming that we don't say this further.
I don't know how we're going to break down, but, but I think Mr. Chays has a good point in that if there's going to be a resolution that differs from what is recommended by the Planning Department, I think he would want to see the language of that resolution specifically, and probably all of us would, before we vote on it, and we don't have that right now.
So then why don't we adjourn it?
Can we, can we vote tonight on the first part, the first part of the...
Yes, could I have the first resolution that was?
Yeah, I think we could do that. There's no...
We can do that, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could do that, and then adjourn the balance.
Somebody helps, I'm not a rich man.
We could, the part where there's no dispute, we can, we can adopt that part of the resolution, and then we can adjourn the balance of the matter till the next meeting, which I believe is August 13.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully by then, we'll be in a position to either pass the resolution as it's proposed now, or if there's going to be some changes to it, because it's... as it's proposed now, or if there's going to be some changes to it, because it, what's going to happen is not exactly as it's proposed now. We could have the wording for that in place, and make, and then we can have, make our decision.
Do you want the department?
You want me to make a?
Yeah, so we would need a motion.
To prepare a motion in line with what you just suggested?
Yeah, I think.
I'm going to make a motion on the first part?
We would adopt the resolution before us, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on the first part.
Correct. Well, I, I think, Mr. Rubius, the part where it says further, that's not part of the resolution.
No, that's not a resolution, that's a note.
Right. So just, just, just pass the resolution, and then we're, after that, we can adjourn the balance of the matter for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so go ahead. Motion, please.
In the matter of Catherine's Estates, number eleven-twenty-seven-point-one, regarding the twelve-foot-by-eight-foot storm pool, and move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? The resolution, the motion carries unanimously, that resolution is adopted. And as to the balance of the application concerning the request, uh, to waive the sidewalks and the four street trees, I move that we adjourn the balance of that application to the next, uh, planning board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? So the balance will be adjourned to the next meeting.
Is the understanding then that the department will prepare an alternate resolution for us, depending on which way we want to go on this, or are we going to rely on Mr. Hickey to provide some kind of proposal?
Well, we're going to wait for your, you're going to do an onsite, from what I gathered, or at least I was listening, some of you are going to do an onsite, and will, uh, the board will probably advise us as to what their decision is if you do reach a decision, and we'll prepare whatever resolution, uh, is necessary, or even if the board, um, is undecided, we'll still prepare a series of resolutions, and then you decide which one you want.
Yes, we have no, we, you know, certainly there's no one here that's, uh, doubting Mr. Hic, any of Mr. Hickey's representations concerning the lack of sidewalks on the street. Um, but as to whether or not there should be sidewalks on this particular piece of property, some of us may want to go out there and look at it, and if it's adjourned till August thirteenth, that gives everybody who wants to do that an opportunity to do that. So, uh, we've already adjourned that to August thirteenth.
Mr. Hickey?
And the other part of the resolution has been passed.
What's the street address of the existing house?
Fifty-two Darling Avenue.
That's it, Mr. Hickey. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Sixteen, is a waiver request from Andreas Neens for Valmont Village, Section Eight, Number One-Sixty-Three. I'm going to begin on the bottom part of this memo, where you'll see it says July sixteenth update. On May twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, the planning board referred this request to permit an existing structure in a drainage easement to the Board of Zoning Appeals for consideration of the associated variance request. At the last BZA meeting on July eighth, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the applicant's request to reduce the minimum distance from a lot line for an accessory structure, thereby requiring that the accessory structures must be located a minimum six feet from the property line, as required by the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the applicant's request to maintain the pool house in the drainage easement five feet from the property line is null and void. The planning department recommends that the waiver request be denied without prejudice. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby denies without prejudice the request of Andreas Neens to permit an existing structure, a pool house in a drainage easement.
Anybody present on behalf of the applicant on this matter? None.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to entertain a motion?
Everybody's present? Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this? No? Uh, any other, any questions from any member of the board? Any motions from any member of the board?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adopt the resolution as recommended by the department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? So adopted.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Other Matters, Item Seventeen, is a report by the planning department regarding a master street plan for an area of Niskentet. Uh, the reason for this report is that the planning department has been contacted by multiple applicants seeking to subdivide several large vacant properties in Niskentet between Southern Boulevard and Lake Avenue South. However, each of these applications assume a different road layout. Consequently, the board has, has to select a proposed road plan that best serves the public interest, i.e. a master street plan. A map of these properties, uh, is attached and shown here on the screen. A master street plan is a plat of future public rights-of-way that guides the physical location of future development. Adopting a master street plan helps streamline the review process and ensures that land is developed in an orderly and efficient manner that provides adequate, provides for adequate act, connectivity and access. The planning board has previously taken this approach for the development of the area between Lawrence Road and Meadow Road, and in many other areas. This approach successfully coordinated the development of multiple parcels into an interconnected neighborhood. To date, the planning department has not distributed any subdivision application until a master street plan for this area is adopted by the planning board. The area between Southern Boulevard and Lake Avenue was originally platted in the year nineteen hundred on the twentieth map of property of the House and Home Company. The two parallel roads are approximately a quarter mile apart, and most of the land was split evenly, uh, between the middle, with lots facing Southern Boulevard and Lake Avenue, all one-eighth of a mile, or two-hundred-and-twenty yards, one furlong deep. These deep lots were subdivided for single-family residences incrementally beginning in the nineteen forties, which each plat creating their own local access streets to access the interior land. Because there was initially little coordination between these developments, the result has been a disconnected network with many dead ends, substandard turnarounds, awkward lot layout, and poor street connectivity. Starting in nineteen sixty-nine, the planning department began to sketch proposed street layout, layouts for the remaining open land that would connect the existing streets and provide adequate access to future development. These sketches are attached. For the reference of the board, attached to this memo is a list of existing and proposed streets in this area, with their intended future connections noted. Planning considerations. One of the primary planning concerns is street connectivity. Connectivity relates to how individual streets are connected to the overall street system. Good street connectivity means providing a variety of ways to get to point, from point A to point B. Connectivity improves mobility, access, less, less traffic congestion, safer streets, municipal cost savings, improved emergency response time, and more efficient delivery of services. According to the Transportation Section of the Comprehensive Plan, in general, the more that streets connect with, with each other, the more evenly distributed traffic is. Conversely, a poorly connected street network creates longer trips, divides neighborhoods, limits alternative routes to school and shopping, delays emergency surfaces, and concentrates traffic on a select number of streets instead of spreading out along the entire street network. Studies from across the country have proven that increasing connectivity by connecting streets results in fewer vehicle miles traveled, more efficient use of taxpayer funds, and improved emergency response time. Combined with traffic calming measures, improving street connectivity can also result in safer streets for children by slowing traffic speeds. When establishing a street plan, consideration should be given to maximize the level of connectivity of local streets while limiting through traffic. Access and orderly development. A primary concern with regard to establishing a street plan is access to land and the orderly development of adjacent parcels. Local streets serve to provide access to land for building lots, and adequate street frontage is essential to creating good subdivision design and efficient lot layout. Inadequate street access results in undevelopable landlocked parcels, as well as substandard lot frontages. Large and oversized lots with limited street access often leads to disorganized or sub, substandard subdivision layouts, such as flag lots. When establishing a street plan, consideration should be given to ensure that all surrounding parcels have adequate access for future development and subdivisions. After studying how these streets were designed to be interconnected through past planning board decisions, two possible alternatives, and their implications for street connectivity and access, the planning department is recommending that Leary Lane and Hurston Lane be connected with Oak Run Drive and Westminster Court in a way that provides frontage to the lots on Lake Avenue South, as illustrated to the, in the attached sketch. An analysis of these alternatives is also attached. This approach was selected because it maximizes connectivity while providing adequate access to the surrounding area. This approach is consistent with previous planning department sketches of the area, as well as all of the past planning board decisions with regard to street connections. Once the board adopts a master street plan, all landowners will be required to follow the board's decision. We would ask that the board review planning's proposal. If the board is in agreement, we would request that the board adopt this proposal by resolution. If possible, we would like to resolve this matter at the next meeting on August thirteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Anybody present on behalf of the applicant, or wants, wishes to be heard on this matter?
Donald King, seventy-five East Main Street, Kings Park, New York. Uh, I rep, I'd like to point out who I represent.
Yes, please do.
Will we go back to the first one, please, Alan? Uh, this is the Leonard parcel. Originally, it's going to be a three-lot subdivision. I started it, the subdivision process, when I was in kindergarten, but, I'm not kidding around. In two thousand and six, I started on this thing. And because there was an overlap problem here, we were unable to get before the, the board, because Frank Derubius wanted it cleared up, and ultimately, we got the title company to clear up the overlap, and it's straightened out. After, recently then, uh, my other client, Mr. Jackalard, owned this property here, and what we've done is, we've, uh, I have a map. This was the original three-lot subdivision that was going to be along here. Mr. Jackalard owns this, and what, what he did with Mr. Leonard is combine resources, and we're now looking for a five-lot subdivision. These are the two existing houses, they would, these would be the three new houses. So, I, planning, I understand, uh, wants to bring a road through here, through the subdivision, and I have a couple of concerns. One is that we have, if the road did go through, that we have twenty thousand square feet per lot with the road, which I believe we just make, for the Health Department purposes. However, if there was a requirement here for a cul-de-sac, until this road could be completed through, uh, we, we would have to go to the board to review, and that's like going to, if you've ever been before them, it's a very difficult process, and they don't grant variances readily. In addition, if my client was required to put this road through, one lot would be here, and the other lots would be over here, um, I talked to Jimmy Fox, he has the Edgewood Avenue subdivision, the six lots in the old YMCA, and I asked him what the cost of the, uh, that road would be. It'd be about ninety feet long, and he told me minimally a hundred-and-fifty thousand bucks. So, my clients, Leonard and Mr. Jackalard, are not going to spend that money to open this up back here. I had my surveyor look at this property, and I believe that this lot and this lot are owned by the, one person, and they have access to Southern Boulevard. This lot is owned by, I think, his wife, and they have access here and here. And for us to have to put this road in is going to cause my clients no end of problem. And if you look in the audience here tonight, I'm not telling anything you don't know, the economy is in the shambles. And I've been working on this thing for eight years. My clients not want, do not want to put a road in for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. It's beyond the pale to require them to do so, when I believe that these people have access here, here, for these lots. And that's why I'm here, objecting to the proposal for the extension of this road, because why should my guys have to come up with a hundred-and-fifty thousand big ones to help somebody else out? Plus the fact that if there's a cul-de-sac required, which sometimes is, when the road ends here, until this can be completed in here anyway, uh, we'd fall short on one lot, whatever that value is, as far as the Health Department goes. So I ask you to tell Frank, no.
Mr. Chairman, may, may?
Yeah, please, I just have a couple of questions, but if you want to respond, that's fine.
Sure, if I may. First off, uh, Mr. King, when he originally submitted this application, Leonard's land was for a three-lot subdivision, his client did not own the second parcel, which is to the south.
Correct.
The first one that he submitted was for a three-lot subdivision, and in that subdivision, you proposed the road connection that came to the south. That's in the subdivision map that you gave him.
Well, I, I didn't propose it, because we didn't need it.
No, it, it's on the map. It shows on the map.
Well, I don't know how it got on the map, because maybe the tooth fairy put it on there, but why would I ask for a road?
We basically said that that's how it had to be laid out at the time, when this map was first laid out. So, what happened was, we have that application currently pending before us. What started this, along with another application, was Mr. King came in when his client acquired a different prop, uh, the additional property, and eliminated that proposed road, and now we had a question with regard to where the road layouts were going to be, because if you take a look at what we have there, we have a number of properties to be concerned with, where's, where, how the roads are going to lay out, and where everybody's going to have access. That's one, uh, basic question. The second thing is, is that I respect Mr. Fox very highly. I think he is a good builder. I think he, uh, does a very nice job in terms of his houses that he builds, but I really, really question a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars.
Hundred-and-fifty.
I will get the highway superintendent to give you a, a cost estimate of that road by the next meeting.
Well, he had, he, he has no dog in this fight, and I asked him, a ninety-foot road with drainage, he said, it's going to cost a minimum of a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred thousand. Even if he was wrong, are they supposed to come up with the sixty thousand, or whatever the number is? I think that's incorrect, so that somebody else can have access. There's no need for it, when my clients have.
Somebody came up for your clients already on these roads and built those roads, so your client could take advantage of whoever built those roads. So if your client now has to build other roads for somebody else, that's part of what a builder has to.
He doesn't have to build roads, because there's, he has road frontage that's required by the town. And the, uh, Frank, if, if there were other people were cut off here, I might agree with you, but they're not cut off.
Okay. This is where the planning board has the final decision. This is not, there's no such thing as an entitlement, like a zoning question, when you come up with a subdivision. It is, uh, as far as I will requ, uh, notify the board, it is your call. There is no such thing as an entitlement, like you would with a zoning question. This board determines where the road layout would be, because you are charged with, uh, trying to come up with, in your opinion, is the, uh, best-suited, uh, layout for this particular area. That is your call. There's no such thing as.
That's called planning.
Hmm? It's called, let's call it planning, but that's.
Yeah, eight years into the, into the fight here, that's even, even in Smithtown, that's beyond the pale.
Mr. King, um, the proposal, I guess, for lack of a better word, we can call it that, that we just spoke about, which would involve, uh, extending Westminster Court, I guess it looks southward, across Parcel B? And you're saying that your estimate is that it would cost a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that your client would have to pay, under these circumstances, to extend Westminster south from where it is now to the bottom of Parcel B?
But, as I indicated to you, I'm okay with the Health Department, unless there was a cul-de-sac, because sometimes highway requires a cul-de-sac, and then I have less than twenty thousand per, per lot, and it would be the additional cost of losing possibly a lot if I didn't get through the board to review. This has been going on eight years. I want you to tell the planning department that you're going to accept my application. I want to come before the planning department with the subdivision.
Now, Mr. Mr. Rubius, hypothetically, under this situation, if Mr. King's client has to pay a hundred-and-fifty, ninety, whatever it happens to be, to extend the road down, uh, through Parcel B, whose responsibility would it be to pay, would it be to pay for the rest of the road there?
That is determined when the subdivisions come in, and usually, it is the person who needs the access bears the cost of wherever that road is. So if Mr. King builds the stub, then the, uh, if Parcel A gets developed, and that's the only way you could have Parcel A get developed, along with the lighter tan lots on, uh, Lake Avenue South, because without Parcel A, you can't develop the other lots, because the, the road will have to go there unless the lighter tan lots, they can figure out a way of getting a street in there by tearing down a house and moving it through that direction.
Well, where you, where those marks are on, where it says large lot on Lake Avenue South, those are existing homes? those are existing homes there now?
Yes, those are existing.
So, if it was going to be developed, as you say, you're talking about perhaps putting three homes on the other side of the property and dividing it in half?
That's correct, yes.
Right now, hypothetically, let's say Mr. King comes in with a subdivision now for his section over there, and he's told, "Okay, you have to also build the extension of Westminster Court across your subdivision, as proposed, for $150,000, $90,000, whatever the price is." And then parcel A, and then the large lots to the south, nothing happens on them for five years, 10 years?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. King's client has to pay for the road, it's just going to go there and end, and it wouldn't be any cut through then, correct?
At this point, yes. It would not be a cut through.
It happens a lot, too. Don't kid yourself. That, I've seen that happen frequently, where there's no development. The other thing I'd like to point out with respect to these lots is, I have, there have been houses behind houses granted to one of my clients I know over there, or in Smithtown and other places. But it's, it's an undue burden upon my client to have to spend this money for a road that he doesn't need. And if a cul-de, if the Highway Department wants a cul-de-sac, we got a problem. We're going to lose a lot. We're going to lose that lot to the left of B. And it's not right. And I've been in this for eight years. And as I say, even in Smithtown, that's unbelievable.
Frank, is there, is there any activity, or any indication of any activity, on the other two pieces of land there?
Parcel A, yes.
Parcel A, yes.
Yes.
How about the one that says "Large Lots to the South"?
They, right now, no. People have periodically, individually, come in and inquired about this over the years, but there's nothing current on that.
Mr. King, what's your buildable yield without the extension of Westminster and with the extension? Because you just said you'd lose a lot. Exactly what do you have before, if you don't have to put the road in? And exactly what do you have after, if you have to put the road in?
The lot's $21,450 square feet. Sorry, $21,450 square feet, $21,655 square feet. I'll hand this up to you. 20,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet. And the parcel that the road would go through is 23,319 square feet, for a total of 106,425 square feet. The zoning district is R-10. You're only required to have $10,000. But for the Health Department purposes, we need 20,000. And I think if the road went through, I don't know the exact configuration, we would just, we would just have over the required 100,000, just be above it. But if a cul-de-sac is put in, and I don't get the board to review, the cul-de-sac would add to the cost that I mentioned.
Mr. King, I think if that's your figures, then you're incorrect. When you come to a temporary cul-de-sac, the way it works is, the cul-de-sac, if there is a bulb, it remains under the lot area owned by the adjacent owners. And it is called a temporary turnaround, and is part of their lot, and is counted as part of the lot area for the 20,000 square foot Article VI determination. It's only when it's a permanent cul-de-sac, when it's entirely dedicated to the town of Smithtown. We would never just have you build a temporary cul-de-sac with that short of a stub, or a permanent cul-de-sac, permanent cul-de-sac with that short of a stub. That would always be intended to move forward. And, you know, if there is a temporary turnaround, it, that would be on your client's property and have to be removed by the next person that would extend that particular street.
If it ever happened. If it ever happened.
If it ever happened, yes.
All right. Well, less, less than 23,000 some odd square feet for the extension. You're saying that you would yield four buildable lots? Is that correct?
I could make the five-lot subdivision. I'd have the 20,000 square feet.
Mr. King, your proposal was down over here on this map, right?
Yes, correct.
And your position is that what your client wants to do is make parcel B into a five-lot subdivision, the two existing homes plus three new homes, and that that could be done without adding any road, because there's enough road there for all those houses to have access?
I believe that's true.
And you're saying if you have to extend the road, you're going to lose one buildable lot?
If, if Frank is correct, and we, and we have to build a cul-de-sac, I would not have a problem with the Health Department, as long as the Health Department counted that cul-de-sac towards my area.
The turnaround easement is part of the adjacent part, right. And I believe that's what, what does happen. So, then, we're saying you'd get four buildable lots?
Five.
I mean, five buildable lots, one way or the other?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry about this phone. I don't know how to shut it off.
That's okay. That's okay. Frank, how long would that temporary easement remain in effect?
It is, remains in effect until the road is extended, if it was required.
Understood.
Unless it's adjourned accord, then it'll keep it that way forever.
Thank you.
Motion to silence.
The, the, the one lot that we're talking about, the road, is currently 23,319 square feet.
Right.
If the road goes in, or is required, the lot's reduced to 17,508 square feet.
However, Mr. King, as you noted, it is, we're formal here. The density for Article VI is counted as the density for the entire subdivision. So, it makes no difference if you have one lot, which is 17,000 square feet.
That's correct.
So, as long as you meet the density requirement.
That's correct.
Furthermore, the zoning for that particular area is quarter acre, or 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. Or R-15, I'm sorry, I've been corrected.
R-15, excuse me.
15,000 minimum lot, square foot lot sizes. So, regardless, the lots are in excess of what the zoning requirement is for that particular area. And your client could build very large homes on that with 25% coverage on that. So, you're basically allowed to build a 6,000 square foot home. We don't see any harm here.
So, you don't see them losing, you don't see them losing the square footage?
Frank, then you pay for it. You pay for the road, if you think there's no harm. There's harm to my clients, who've been waiting eight years.
Somebody, okay, I'll...
I'm sorry. You want, if you wanted to respond, go ahead.
What happens is, is that somebody built Oak Run as a subdivision, which allowed Mr. King's client to develop. That person who built it, and it wasn't his client, had to absorb all of those costs. And now, Mr. King would like his client, and I can't blame him, to take advantage of those costs. What we are saying from the planning side, that if you are going to have a proper road system in here, you need to build a road stub that needs to come down for a future road for somebody else to connect onto this particular area.
Now, you said there was some activity regarding the parcel A.
Well, before you do that, just to make sure I'm on the same page, then, we're saying that with the road or without the road, we could still have five buildable lots. And with the road or without the road, the square footage of those houses could remain the same?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm sorry, Jim. Go ahead.
Now, what, now...
The Oak, excuse me, the Oak Run Bond is in default, and the town is picking up on it.
And what does the proposal, as you know it, or possible proposal for parcel A entail?
We, I've had several meetings with various people interested in this property. We haven't received an official proposal. The difficulty has been determining what the access is. As you can see, it has very limited frontage on Southern Boulevard. And what we've told them is that it couldn't be accessed via Southern Boulevard because of Bella Court above it, Hurstone Drive below it, and the entrance to the middle school, which is here, just due to the proximity of intersections. It has limited frontage here on Hurstone and Leary Lane, which is designed to be interconnected. But the difficulty in developing this property is first determining what the access is. So, we've had inquiries, but nothing official proposed yet.
If I may point out...
But Mr. I think what Mr. King is saying is that the road is really going to benefit the people who develop parcel A, and perhaps those who develop the back part of the large lots on Lake Avenue South. And why should his client have to pay 90, 100, $150,000, whatever it is, for a road that's not going to benefit his proposed subdivision at all, but is going to possibly benefit the other two, where, I guess what he's saying is, let them pay for that?
Except that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may answer that re-question.
Let's go, let's put the road in here.
If I may answer your question in specifics. When we were building Oak Run, and if you look at the map, we had every ability to bring that road and bring it on the inside, so that where the subdivisions were, that it would affect only the applicant's clients. We made him put that road on the south to benefit other people. And we do that because we are looking to maximize the development potential of an area. Everyone who develops a road, and this is the problem that we have all throughout the town, they wait for somebody else to bear the cost, and then they wish to take advantage of what everybody, somebody else wants to do. And now, they're claiming that there's an unfair cost here that's assigned to it. There is a benefit that the applicant is receiving from our decisions on building the length of Oak Run. Take a look at that length of that road, that is, is far longer, four times longer, than what the applicant, we're asking the applicant to build in this particular area. So, we're not asking this gentleman to bear an undue cost with regard to this.
Well, didn't they have to build Oak Run for the houses that front onto Oak Run?
No. What happened was, when we did the subdivision on Oak Run, we could have moved that street upwards and have, because Oak Run goes all the way up Westminster Court, we could have had the street on the northern side of those lots. And therefore, this applicant would never have access to that particular road.
Mr. Chairman, let's get a competing estimate on the cost of building this road, because if we're going to get five buildable lots, and it's $150,000, that may be different than if we're going to get five buildable lots, and it's $60,000, or $40,000, or $80,000. I know that the builder doesn't want to pay anything. I don't blame him. If I were a builder, I'd want to maximize my profit as well.
Just business.
But let's find out what the cost would be, because that's at least an important piece of the puzzle. But I think I get, as everybody else here does, that this is part of being in a community, and builders have to build roads that other people sometimes use, because they benefit from roads that other people built to get them there. I get that piece. Let's find out if it's 150, or 50, or 75, or 350.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a crucial part of the...
I think that's important.
...of weighing the pluses and minuses.
I mean, just how much of a burden do we lay on this guy? We have to figure out. 150 is one figure, 50 is another figure. 50 allocated across five buildable lots is not terrible. 150 allocated across five buildable lots is...
In this economy, if you want to, if you look in Smithtown, in this economy, there's no, nothing going on. And 50 grand is 50 grand. I don't care what you call it.
I get that piece, too.
These are great times. Maybe I might say to you, I agree with you. But I will get Jimmy Fox to give me his assessment. I'll put it in affidavit form, and I'll submit it to the Planning Board.
Please.
Absolutely. Whatever information you want to give to us, we'd be more than happy to look at. And if Mrs. Rubius is going to get an estimate from the Highway Department?
We're going to call, actually, the Town Engineer. We think we...
Or the Town Engineer. From, or from anybody else you want to get an estimate from. Taking as much information as we can, and then we'll make a more informed decision, whichever way we end up going.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time as well. Thank you.
Twenty-two thousand dollars usually costs us... Yeah. I just think we're missing a necessary piece in the...
One piece?
Yes.
I think we all have to go out there, too.
I think that's absolutely right.
I can't, I can't even imagine doing this without going to look at it from all different, every different angle. So, does this require an app, a motion for adjournment, or is this just a report?
No, this is just a report before the board.
Okay.
I should also mention that attached to that report, there is a memorandum from
By the way, if, what we're asking the board to do, if the board makes the final decisions on these matters, obviously, that's your call. But whatever the board decides, we have to come up with a master road layout for this area.
Right. One way or the other.
And that's, we're going to, one way or the other, we have to answer this particular question. So, it's not just the one question that we have to answer.
I understand.
We have to come up with a system.
And frankly, interconnectivity has to start someplace. We can't just constantly keep passing it, saying, "Well, we're not going to do it to this builder, and then the next builder, and then the next builder, because our roads are already jammed without adequate flow."
Well, you're, basically, what you're saying is that we have to come up with a plan for this particular area. If it's not the one that you had proposed, it's going to be another one.
That's correct.
One way or the other, we're going to have to come up with a plan, which we will do.
Okay. Because what's happening right now is, Mr. King's application was Leonard's Land, the original three-lot subdivision, was distributed, and that did have the road connection in it. And then, when he came with revision, I, that, and we were also discussing at the time, or Alex was discussing with somebody at the time on a separate parcel, that particular other parcel A, that's when we decided, we can't go and review this with two different road layouts for that particular area. So, that's what, in general, I asked Alex, and I think he did a very good job, by the way, from his boss's point of view.
And thank you, Alex. This is really...
We all your bosses. That's a job.
Okay. I think he did a good job in giving you a good history of that particular site, and also digging up all of that information that we had in, in the town. I thought that was very good.
Can we get copies of these?
I would just say, good job, as usual.
Thank you. Very much, I appreciate it.
Can we get copies of these outlines for the next meeting, just so we have them for our records?
Yes. We will...
I'll give these into Frank, and he can get his copies.
Yes. Well, we're getting five buildable lots, and we're getting five exactly the same-sized houses. The question is whether we're getting the road, and how much it's going to cost.
And where it's going to go.
Right.
Who's going to pay for it?
We'll also show, we'll show you the original Leonard's Land, so you can see what, there was a road that the applicant proposed, but the applicant's not here yet, so we'll let it.
But you're saying that he had a different application for just three?
Yes, with the road coming down.
But that is off the table now. From his perspective, he has a new application for five.
Right. Which, we were going to, that was another whole issue, because since we already distributed that other map, it'd already been reviewed, we were formally going to have to change that. And there's, there's a whole bunch of issues with regard to changing that at this particular juncture, because it, the reason for the delay, by the way, was not the town of Smithtown. Mr. King kept on talking about how long it took. He did say on the record, and I want to emphasize, because he said this several times, it was not the town of Smithtown that delayed it. He had a property dispute. And...
He mentioned that, I believe, about the overlay, that you were talking about, right?
Yes.
This notch here.
So, it took some time for him to, to resolve that property dispute issue before we could go forward with any plan?
That's correct. And, but it was implied at some points that maybe it was waiting far too long. We would have been happy to have resolved this early on, except for the property dispute that was going on.
And in the meantime, someone else built Oak Run, the road. So, that was, that's a big help to him and other builders.
Do you know how long it took to resolve that property dispute?
About six years.
So, six of the eight years that he was talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, then, this, there's no motion needed on this? Anybody have any other points they want to make, or questions they want to ask on this? Then, we do have one more matter on, which is the adoption of the minutes.
When are we, when are we adjourning this, too? To the next meeting?
I think we're just adjourning it, and...
Without a date?
It'll come on when it comes on.
Well, what we're going to, this is an ongoing, working matter. And I think what the board is listening to, you may want to discuss this as well as, you may want to give us, you may want to look at it in another area. We'll provide you with the information as you requested, and we'll wait for the board's direction as to which way we'll go with this.
But we should all do on sites between now and, if not the next meeting.
I would, I would think that's highly recommended.
We have a month. I mean, even before the next meeting. So, there's, I don't see any reason why all of us can't get out there between now and then.
I agree.
It shouldn't be, that part of it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah. We'll, what I told Alex, we'll provide you with the information in the interim with the maps and the cost estimates and everything else. I'll also, as a courtesy, send them to Mr. King, so he's aware of them.
Okay. That's fair enough.
You might want to advise Mr. Oshren as well, that we're going to be doing on sites at 52 Darling, I presume, and certainly at these, because he might want to be prepared for the next board meeting.
Okay. Alex, 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 to do that.
Please.
Sure. Okay?
Thank you.
So, we have one more matter on tonight, which is the adoption of the minutes of the May 21, 2014 meeting. We have a motion on that?
Chairman, motion to adopt the meeting minutes from June 4, 2014, as provided.
No, I think it's the May 21st.